Hello, everyone. We'll just give another minute or two for all the attendees to come into the call. I see the numbers starting to stabilize, but we'll just give another thirty seconds or so and then get started tonight. Thanks for joining us. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. And again, thanks for joining us in this virtual town hall format. With me tonight are councillors Claire Ripma and councillor Keenan Ailwen, representing wards one and two. And I'm delighted to be doing this town hall together with them. All of these town halls are organized by Lauren Wilde of my office, who does just an incredible job setting it up and who will also be directing the questions tonight so that we can have some of the pre-submitted questions and to take your questions tonight in the Q and A. So a reminder that if you want to ask a question tonight, you can put it into that question and answer function that's on the bottom of the Zoom screen. And we will endeavor to try and get to everything tonight. We often aren't able to answer every single question. And that's where email comes in and follow up. So of course, you can email Lauren, who you would have got the email link or the Zoom link for tonight from. And we will endeavor to answer your questions if we couldn't get to it tonight. Michael Prowse, the city's chief administrative officer is also with us so that we can pass any tough questions to him. That was just a joke, but Mike is here to answer questions about city services and all of the work that, of course, we try and do as a municipality to deliver the sixty different services that the city of Barry does deliver in our community. I'm just going to make a few opening remarks and then hand it over to Keenan and Claire to make a few opening remarks before we get into the questions, but I won't be talking for too long because, of course, tonight is mostly about answering questions. I did want to start tonight by giving you a quick update on the COVID situation only because caseloads have been rising and we are starting to see some increased concerns about it. With a relatively high rate of vaccination, about eighty-seven, eighty-eight percent in our community, that of eligible residents, I should say, and that is only about three quarters of all residents because, of course, kids aren't yet eligible. That is helping to ensure that although caseloads have been rising, hospitalizations are rising much more slowly because there are fewer people getting seriously ill. That notwithstanding, I was talking to our chief medical officer of health today, Dr. Gardner, and there's no question that we are seeing a fairly substantial increase in the number of cases. And it's sort of a reminder that it's not gone just because we have such a, we have a high percentage of our population vaccinated. We are still going to have to be careful and cautious, especially when it comes to large indoor gatherings if we want to be able to stay open the way we are now. And, you know, I think that's, it's a very important reminder at this point. If you haven't been vaccinated yet, there has never been a better time. We believe Health Canada is very close to approving the vaccine for five to eleven year olds, and then that will roll out through the health unit locally. But even that will take several months before it further protects the remaining portion of our population or some of our remaining population. Just overall, I wanted to make a couple of comments. I think where we are right now coming out of COVID, we, our economy locally is booming, but the impacts of COVID have meant that not everybody shares in that to an even greater degree. And we are seeing the impact of both the pandemic and high housing prices, especially exacerbating some of the social issues in our community. And of course, everyone is where we have an opioid crisis and there have been very severe mental health impacts from COVID as well. I can tell you that for city council, the housing issue is at or near the top of our agenda. Overall, we will set a record. I think you have to go back twenty years for a year in which we had the same number of housing starts in Barry as we will have in 2021. And what's substantially different now is that a lot more of those are apartments, a mixture of medium density apartments along some of our arterial roads and in nodes and higher density, as you can start to see with cranes in places like Young and Ashford and Bayfield and Hamner and downtown and others. The overall situation, though, when it comes to employment, we are back to the pre-pandemic level of jobs, but there are still sectors that are really disproportionately impacted and we are obviously quite concerned about those sorts of impacts as well. All of this is driving a unprecedented degree of development activity and many of you I know are here because of development activity in your neighborhoods, either projects that have happened from, you know, second suites to major proposals that are coming in your neighborhood or proposed in your neighborhood. And I think it's fair to say Keenan, Claire and I are here to try and answer some of your questions about that. But if we can't get to those questions tonight, of course, we're happy to answer them afterwards. I'm going to leave it there. There's so much more I could talk about, but I can tell you as your mayor, the things that are on my mind most right now are the increasing polarization of the impacts of the housing crisis, the fact that the most affected in our community, the most marginalized in our community are the most heavily impacted and that's getting worse. And the fact that so many people are priced out of being able to own or even rent a safe place to live in our community. Never in my life did I think that Barry would have more, it would be more expensive to rent an apartment in Barry than in Toronto. But there are so many people who want to live here and such a shortage of rental housing. That's the case today and that is truly astonishing. So the housing issue is at the top of our agenda and along with it, the pressure that's being faced and the challenges that are being faced by by the most marginalized in our community. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Claire to make some opening remarks and then pass it on to councillor Owen.
Well, welcome to everybody here. It's great to have so many people on the line. I guess I'm really looking forward to doing these in person to person again, but I suspect that that may be a little while yet. We've got lots to talk about tonight, so I won't take too much time. We'll get to your questions. I think, you know, I'm sure that the comments are going to be some of them in Ward one to do with absentee landlords and and overcrowding and that kind of thing. And I'm happy to chat about those. And then, you know, we just amended the zoning bylaw with respect to accessory suites. So I think we've done a good, fairly good job there. Let's see how that works out in the longer run. But I think we've got a better handle on it now than we ever did. And of course, yeah, you know, traffic speeding, noisy cars, I'm sure we'll hear some of that. One thing that is going to affect everybody is that we're working on the budget at the moment. And there's going to be, before the end of the year, we're going to have a whole lot of discussions about what needs to be in the budget and what needs to be out of it. And the south end of Ward one isn't left out. We're doing a vegetation management program, project consultant on the North Shore Trail. There's been a lot of complaints over the years about how vegetation is managed there. And we are working on trying to sort that out and get a better handle on how we do that. So that's my couple of minutes for introduction and I'll turn it over to Keenan.
Thank you, Claire, and thank you so much to all of you for being here this evening. I see a lot of familiar names in the list. I would like to acknowledge that many of us are gathered on the territory of the Inishnaabe people, which include the Odawa, Ejiwe and Bada Wataomi nations, who are collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. And this land is also covered by the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. And, you know, as a settler myself, I think it's important to recognize the history and the ongoing impacts of colonialism on this land, especially, you know, in this political and community work that we do and that we need to work together in the spirit of reconciliation going forward. And also a word of caution, I'm recovering from getting my appendix removed and I am on some pain meds. So if I say anything stupid tonight, I'm totally going to blame it on the pain meds. But happy to be here and answer all your questions. I see a lot of great questions pouring in through the Q and A function and the chat. And Mayor Lehman really hit the nail on the head when it comes to the challenges that we face, including the housing crisis. I see the impacts, living downtown, of people who are unhoused. And it's unacceptable that we have so many people living rough out on the street. The reality is that housing is a human right and a basic human need and we have not done enough. All levels of government have not done enough to ensure that everyone has a safe, affordable place to call home. And we had a great meeting of the Affordable Housing Task Force just this morning. And there's going to be some strong progressive recommendations coming forward to city council on that. I think the other big challenge that we face and we're seeing it in B C right now, the impacts of climate change and the climate crisis. It's severe weather is just going to get more severe and the costs of doing nothing are just going to get greater. So we need to act. The city is in the process now of developing a greenhouse gas reduction plan for the first time. And we're going to be funding to back that up. And I hope we can count on the support of the public to make that happen. Because we all have a part to play, but we need systems level change to be able to really address this crisis. But looking forward to the conversation tonight about all the issues you're bringing forward and turn it back to you, Mayor Lehman, or to Lauren to moderate.
Yeah, I think we'll go to Lauren now. Lauren's going to direct traffic and ask the questions from the three different sources. So again, you can raise your hand and Lauren can come to you. Use the raise hand function at the bottom of the screen there. You can put your question in the Q and A and then we also have a number that we're pre-submitted. So Lauren's going to take us through that from here and I'll hand it over to you, Lauren.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Thank you, councillors. I'm happy to be joining you all. I just want to advise that we do have quite a number of attendees tonight, so if we could keep comments brief and limit it to one question per person, if that's agreeable, just to keep things moving along. So we have Erlynne, who's got their hand up. So Erlynne, I'm going to add you to the conversation. If you'd like to unmute yourself, we can certainly have your question.
Hi there. Thank you, Mayor Lehman and councillors for holding this forum. I don't know if I'm on video as well. I'm happy to be on video. That's fine, too. My name is Erlynne Wong Sing. I live in Ward one. I'm a parent of three children who go to Oakley Park Public School in Ward two, where I am a member of the school council. This past year, a school council has been attempting to have the city look at the traffic and parking concerns on the street in front of our school due to significant safety concerns during drop off and pickup. But so far, we haven't had any success getting action from our ward councillor. We believe that solutions such as limiting stopping or parking on one side of Davidson Street during peak periods would improve the safety for the children and reduce congestion for the neighborhood. So this would be similar to maybe signage in front of Cotterington and Steel Street Schools. So I'm coming on behalf of this council to ask if we could have someone meet with us and review the safety issues and potentially implement some changes. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Erlynne, for being here this evening and I'd be happy to meet with you on that. This is a problem throughout the city with public schools. The drop off situation is a tricky one and there's no simple solution. I appreciate you bringing those solutions, those proposals to the table. You know, sometimes when you ban parking on one side of the street, that can actually increase the speed of traffic because there's less of that visual interruption when you're driving down the street and it could make it unsafe. So those are things we have to think about. But I will absolutely follow up with the school council after this meeting. I appreciate you bringing that here.
So should I email you directly then and expect a response?
That would be great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for your patience while I'm just clicking buttons behind the scenes. Just another question that's been submitted is a safety question specifically around some safety concerns, vehicle and pedestrian traffic around Eccles, Perry and Innisville. In that S bend specifically, there are larger developments coming and then the S C S is proposed for that area. So is there any comments on how to make that area safer?
Yeah, thanks for that question. That is the weirdest intersection. It's very strange. I actually was talking with our staff a few months ago about what could be done there. Really, it's, it never should have been designed that way to create such a wide open area. When you have that wide open space, people tend to treat it like a freeway. It's just a psychological thing. When it's a wide open space, you go faster. That definitely poses some, some safety concerns. In the short term, we are moving around our radar speedboards throughout the city in each ward. Each ward gets allocated a number of them and that's a I see in the chat, it's not very wide open, it's very narrow. But yeah, in the actual intersection itself, it's wide open, but on Perry Street, yes, you're right, it's very narrow. And so radar speedboards, I think, are a good short term solution. In terms of actually retrofitting the intersection, that's a longer term thing we can look at. And I will follow up with our infrastructure staff on that. I can't recall at the moment if there are any plans in our capital plan for that specific street. And perhaps also there's an opportunity with the new development going in hip developments. And there's the potential for a street, for Simcoe Street to continue through the old central lands. Potentially, there's an opportunity there for us to add some more permanent and more effective traffic calming measures to straighten that out.
Yeah, I was going to just jump into there on councillor Owen's response and say, you know, that the weird S bend is created by that, the odd shape of the building, the old G factory that's now buried by the bay and the warehouse that sticks out there. The, it's my opinion, I'm not sure everybody shares it, that we should not have a road that goes through the former Barry Central Lands and connects to the waterfront. My reasoning for that is that I think people, it will become very busy. I think it'll become another route to the waterfront. And what is today an already busy street, Innisville and Eccles, will become exceedingly busy. You've got additional development and you create a connection through. So I'd like to see a pedestrian only connection. And, and the entrance to the hip development and the entrance to both, sorry, from Bradford Street and from Innisville Street not connect. So it would not be a through road. It would be driveways into the, into the redevelopment site. I also think there's some opportunity as we, as that happens and Red Story Field is redeveloped to maybe work on the intersection to, to, to slow things down a little. But I think the visibility problem is not going to change as long as the building is there. So what we need to look at is, is traffic calming through there.
Thank you so much. We have a question with regards to the development near St Giles. Is there any updates on that that you could provide?
Yeah, there is no update at the moment. I know that there is some activity, some discussion going on, but we have no application at this time. That doesn't mean we won't have one tomorrow, but at the moment, we don't.
Thank you so much. So we have a question with regards to the landlord licensing, the absentee landlord proposal. And the city wants to address this issue by using bylaw officers. It's, this resident believes it hasn't worked in the past to clear up the issue and wondering how we can address these issues going forward.
I think that one lands in my lap. The, yeah, we, the council decided that we wouldn't do landlord licensing, but instead we would hire a number of enforcement officers who would be tasked with proactively enforcing the, the property standards bylaw. And the hope is that we will be able to make some considerable difference doing it that way. The concern with the, with the licensing was twofold. One, that it was going to be implemented in the college area initially as a trial. And then whether it would get rolled out across the whole city, that was still up in the air. And then the second concern was that the good landlords would also need to get a license, whereas we really are looking to get the bad landlords whipped into shape. So what the plan is now is to hire a number of enforcement officers who are dedicated to doing property standards and that they're going to enforce them proactively. In other words, we've always now had, if there was a, our enforcement has always been complaint driven, which tends to set one neighbor against another and it just doesn't really work very effectively. So these guys and gals will be working on it proactively. So if they see something, they're going to call it. So let's, let's hope that that goes a long ways to solving the problem. If it does, that's wonderful. If it doesn't, we're just going to have to revisit this problem again.
Yeah, and I noticed in the chat a few comments and questions around the additional enforcement. Budget is literally in two weeks. And that will be where the rubber hits the road. Council will need to make a decision to increase the budget and fund the additional officers required to move to proactive enforcement. It's actually something that has been asked for by the community in different ways for many years. We've historically moved very slowly. We did add one officer last year, but a substantial investment needs to be made to, to address the kind of impacts that so many of you are concerned about and councillor Ripma is referring to, the property standards issues, the illegal parking problems, the things that really do bring down the situation for neighbors. It's, it's straight up enforcement and, you know, I think it's, it will be a money issue in the budget, but it has been more of a, it's been a growing priority for councillors. And I think, you know, the question will be whether council fully funds what the resources that are needed to accomplish the enforcement. I hope they do. I'm certainly in favor of it. I know councillor Ripma knows.
Thank you so much. We do have a question and answer here. Wondering about the planned Simcoe County housing project at the former OPP station, site on Rose Street, thrilled for some social housing as I'm just around the corner. But my only concern is the traffic impact with the additional units and the services that will be there, especially with the Bayfield interchange being rebuilt. Every plan put forward by the M T O for that interchange in their planning document makes Rose Street a dead end by the OPP station.
That is an excellent question because I, and I don't have the answer vis a vis the M T O. The rebuild of the Bayfield interchange is still a few years out. Probably the housing project will happen first. But that being said, it, all of the interchanges are to be done over the coming ten or fifteen years. So I think that's probably one for a follow up and whoever's asked that question, if it's possible to email us at officeofthemayor@berry.ca or to Lauren, the email link that you got, we can get an answer as to where the traffic in and out would, would come from. I do think that the, to some extent, social housing complex, you know, has lower vehicle requirements than some other forms of housing. But if you're going to have service delivery there, the people have to get there and, and get out and get back to the rest of the city. So that's a follow up for us. Thanks for the question.
Thanks so much. So we have a question with regards to the proposed development around Johnson Street. The trees at Indian Arrow have been removed and a couple of people are looking for an update, whether the trees are going to be replaced and if there's any information about the development going on around there.
Okay, this has been the subject of a lot of discussion over the years. Yes. The builder there has received approval to build the second building. He has achieved site plan approval and has got his permits for the basement part. I'm not entirely clear how far that goes, but he's, he's ready to start building and the trees, I wasn't aware that the trees were being taken down at this point already, but any work that's going on there is in connection with the, with the building. And the site plan approval process has a landscape plan attached to it. And if the developer is required to do all the landscaping that the landscape plan has in it. So those trees would probably be replaced in some fashion or other.
Yeah, the, those, I think there's a lot of people on this call know the history on this one. The city actually opposed that building. It was approved subsequently on appeal. And since then, we have tried to work with the developer to ensure that the impacts are as managed, mitigated, managed as possible. So on the specific issue, again, we can help councillor Ripma with the follow up detail on, on the tree removal.
Thank you so much. So going back to some comments that councillor Ailwen made, considering what's happening in B C, what is the city overall doing to help support the climate change mitigation?
Go ahead councillor, I want to, I'll jump in after you. Go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So there's, there's been a group working, it's called the Greenhouse Gas Reduction and Community Energy Plan Stakeholder Advisory Group, quite a mouthful. And we've been working on developing a greenhouse gas production plan for the city. We had, the city has had a climate change adaptation plan for quite a while. So how do we adapt our community to respond to the effects of climate change like increased flooding, more severe storms, et cetera. But we haven't had a climate change mitigation plan, which is how do we reduce our emissions to make sure that climate change in the future isn't as severe and that we can keep warming below one point five degrees Celsius as required by the Paris Agreement. So that group has been working over the past year. We're hoping to have the plan presented to council in the spring. And that's a huge step forward for us as a city. It's going to take a lot of effort and frankly, a lot of funding to make it happen. And sorry, my dog's drinking water in the background. I don't know if you can hear that ringing, but it's thirsty apparently. So when that comes to council, we're going to have to have a tough conversation about priorities and what we fund in that plan because it's going to cost far more to not implement that plan. We have to be leaders at the local level and say, this is the greatest threat facing humanity. And we need to put our money behind all the actions we can to reduce emissions. And at the same time, the benefit is that it creates healthy, happier communities. You know, by creating more bike lanes, you know, you get healthier, happier people. By reducing pollution, you get healthier kids. So it's, it's a win-win in my books, but we got to start taking that action as soon as possible.
Sorry, Keenan's covered, I think, the work that's being done to develop the city's own, our contribution as the city of Barry towards the global fight against climate change in terms of mitigation. Transportation is the single largest source of emissions. We do live in a community where climate and the winter climate and so on can create challenges for transportation, but I would also say that we are, should be proud to, and I noticed a couple of questions in the chat around this, be leaders in electric vehicle support through be leaders in electric vehicle support through the work that's been done both by Electra and through the city in partnership with Tesla and others. We, for a while there had more chargers per capita than, than any other major Canadian cities. I'm, I'm not, I don't want to claim that right now because I'm not sure that's still true. But we've been trying to, to, to support, for example, the electric, electrification of, of our, of the on-road fleet, including the city's own electrification strategy. I think though, more broadly, you know, the other piece that never, doesn't get a lot of attention, we focus a lot of effort on transportation rightly. Buildings themselves and the building code and building for net zero is really the next frontier. And it's not just retrofits. It is really about the way we build homes going forward. A more energy efficient home has lower operating costs. So the people who live in it benefit from lower energy costs going forward. That does come at some cost upfront and that's one of the biggest challenges right now in the midst of a housing crisis. It's never, it's never entirely simple, but they, these are not all trade-offs that, that always have to be made. There are approaches to the Ontario Building Code changes that can be made to the Building Code, general building practice, and especially with medium and higher density development, which can dramatically reduce the emissions required for the energy use in buildings. So, and the last plug I'd put in there is the city, you know, for about eight years now has had a guy named Adam McMullin, who does nothing but try and reduce the city's own energy consumption. And he ran a competition, for example, among the three rec centers to see who could knock their energy costs down the most and their carbon emissions down the most. And that was through a combination of retrofits and, and technologies and also our, our own practices in terms of how we were maintaining the buildings. So, you know, I think it's, it's an ongoing effort, but yeah, if we ever, you know, it's astonishing to watch what's happening to cities just like us, like Abbotsford is the size of Barry. What's going on right now is, is truly astonishing. We've seen the same degree of increase in severe weather events, particularly rainfall in a very short period of time. And that's on the adaptation side is, is going to be expensive, but it, it's necessary. I mean, we're seeing it across the country.
Thanks so much for the comments. We do have a hand up from G. So I will add you to the conversation if you can unmute yourself and go.
Hi, good evening, guys. Sorry, I'm a little bit late for the meeting tonight. This question may have already been answered. I drive around downtown. I see a lot of signs around for new developments, new condos. When are the, or when are we going to get shovels in the grounds for these? What's, what's the delay?
Oh, yeah, let me, let me report to you a little bit on that. There's, there's, there's none that are significantly delayed with the exception that I'm aware of. Of the exception would be the Five Points residences where the developer chose to, decided to not proceed with the projects despite having taken the, the, the step of marketing and, and taking deposits. The debut condos, obviously the theater block is currently being demolished. Their construction plan is to begin as soon as demolition is done. It's a long plan. It's going to take three years, but that is, that's the status update on that one. Smart Centers or Greenwin, which is the hotel, the downtown waterfront hotel and the, the new shops and then the 25-story building between Bradford and Lake Shore. That's the one there's, you've seen some site work happening over the fall. They are scheduled to get moving in a substantive way in the first months of 2022. Obviously, Lack House is well under construction. I think the other really big, and the one on Dunlop West, and I've forgotten the name of that development, but the apartment midway along Dunlop between Eccles and Anne. So tho- those are all underway and I don't, I don't believe any of them have really experienced delays. The only other one that, that you may be referring to is, is Hip and that was, that's the Berry Central Lands and Prince of Wales, former Prince of Wales. One Berry resident, you refer to what used to be there, right? Longtime residence. So with a little bit of sadness, right? But that development is 600 badly needed purpose-built rental units that will help a lot with the housing crisis. And they did choose to change their plans with the YMCA and go back and change some of their site plan. And that's where that issue of, will the road go through or not? And where will the buildings be located on the property? That is still with site plan. So I suppose there is a delay to the, to, to that one compared to where they planned on being a year ago.
So Riviera was the other one that I was thinking about there.
It's, oh, yeah. No, that's a good point. That, that was sold. The owners of that building sold it. So I'm not sure what the status update is with the new owners.
Hopefully, the, where the Y used to be, the Y has been taken down and now there's going to be construction there for another 900 units and I think that's also going to go underway pretty soon.
Yeah, I, I suspect, I mean, I optimistically called 2020 the year of the crane. As it turned out, there were four cranes up by the end of 2020, but I'd expected a few more. I think we'll see quite a few more in 2022.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So on the, the topic of downtown developments, what about a grocery store?
Oh, wouldn't it be great? So 10 years ago, when the IGA was sold to Sobeys and then they were making a decision about its future. I said, I mean, and they decided to close it. I actually called them up and said, please don't close this. It's our last remaining grocery store. I remember when we had three of them in the downtown, full grocery store. And to be fair to, to Nutrition Plus, they are absolutely a grocery store. But, you know, in terms of a full-service supermarket or full-scale supermarket, they were the last. And the Sobeys executive that I spoke to, a vice president at that time, said, well, how much development is coming to the downtown? And at that time, I didn't have a lot to report. We had one building, 15 Maple. And they said, well, call me when there's 5,000 more people living downtown. Well, now there are going to be at least, and per the last question, the number, a number, quite a few more people living downtown. And that is what is needed to support a grocery store in the opinion of the chains, who unfortunately now, all the big grocery store developers build big grocery stores. And like everything else, including schools, I don't think our cities are better for this, by the way, but it is the trend with schools, department stores, grocery stores, build giant ones, build fewer of them and put them out in the suburbs. And it doesn't seem to matter whether we're talking about schools or, or grocery stores, that's the trend. And to get an urban footprint grocery store, by the way, I think there are a couple more coming to the south end. But to get one into our downtown, we need more customers. And, you know, it doesn't matter whether you're a green grocer or a barber or a restaurant, the more customers you have living within walking distance, the stronger the chance of you succeeding as a business is and the stronger our chance of attracting and keeping a store in the, in the core.
Thank you so much. Now, we have a question with regards to the proposed SCS site. Notwithstanding the mitigated mitigation strategies put forth by the applicants, what is the city of Barry's plans to support this part of the neighborhood and the potential decline according to the residents?
Sure. So I can start with that and Keenan, you might want to weigh in, I think. So of course, the city's approval is a step in the process. The, the decision as to whether an SCS comes to Barry is the provinces and it sits with the Ministry of Health. And part of their application is obviously the mitigation strategy that was referred to in the question. I think there's two pieces I would, I would say in response to that question. One is that Barry Police are going to be very aware that the success of the SCS is contingent on people feeling safe, not just the users, but the neighbors. And so notwithstanding the nature of what happens at an SCS, I can assure you Barry Police are going to be very, very aware of the area and, and, and making efforts to ensure that no drug dealing goes on in the area surrounding it and those sorts of issues that I know people in the neighborhood are, are fearful of. I would say from the city, so that's the very, you know, the Barry Police. I think the, the second piece of this is that, you know, my concern today is that we have people overdosing and using openly in the area in that neighborhood in near Milligan's Pond, to the east in the few blocks of downtown, immediately to the east of there. And our hope is that the public spaces that are currently being used will actually no longer be used for open drug use because there will be a, a big reduction in that activity. And we will be able to, you know, feel safer with using those public spaces. But I think in terms of, I mean, if the question is, what would the city be doing in terms of the mitigation strategy? We are part as a, as a, one of many organizations that are invested in this, the success of the SCS in reducing the impacts of open drug use and, and overdoses. Both, you know, in terms of the deaths, the number of people who are dying and the, the impacts on our neighborhoods. So we're part of the mitigation strategy and, you know, I think I said at the time and, and councillor Ailwyn may want to weigh in, that if, if there's some notion that we're just gonna like ignore problems that occur there, please do nev- do not ever believe that. I mean, I, I understand that I, you know, I'm one of the biggest proponents of the SCS. I, along with the leaders of the county, the Barry Police Chief, the President of the Hospital, the Chief Medical Officer of Health just wrote to the province to say, hurry up and approve this because people are dying. But if this thing is not successful, if there are endless problems and the community doesn't have confidence in it, then it's not going to succeed. If there's conflict between the users and the neighborhood, it's not going to succeed. So I guess I just want everybody who is on the call right now and aware of the SCS to know that although it's not our decision as to whether it goes there, it is up to the province. If it is approved, and I hope it is, then, you know, my commitment is to be part of the success of that by making it a dignified place to be used by, by the users and to minimize the impact on the neighborhood however we can. Keenan?
Very well said, Jeff. I completely agree. I, I think when we're talking about health issues and this is a health issue, this is a medical facility that we're talking about, a supervised consumption site is a medical facility. We really need to look at the evidence and we need to listen to experts. And the reality that we're dealing with is that to date, there's never been a single peer-reviewed study of any kind that has found evidence linking a supervised consumption site to increased crime in a neighborhood. There's never been a peer-reviewed study that has found a supervised consumption site being linked to increased crime in a neighborhood. So I, I hear a lot of fear and I understand, you know, there's a lot of stigma around drug use, a lot of stigma around people who are unhoused. But we can't let fear prevent us from doing what's right and what the evidence supports. And I can tell you that there are existing drug issues in the neighborhood. In the past couple of months, I've participated in three cleanups at Milligan's Pond and have filled containers full of needles. So, and, and that's with a needle, a needle bin permanently being placed in Milligan's Pond. So there's lots of drug use occurring. It may not be visible all the time, but it's there, it's happening and we can't ignore it and people are dying at an alarming rate. And I can't think of a greater priority as a city councillor than doing whatever I can to ensure that my constituents aren't dying. That's, that's kind of got to be top of, top of the list and I'm confident that we can address your concerns with the mitigation strategies with the, the Barry Police, as Mayor Leman talked about. Supervised consumption sites work. They prevent death. They prevent the transmission of blood-borne diseases. They prevent instances of public drug use. They prevent instances of discarded needles in the area. They can connect people to vital services, including treatment. So it's the right thing to do and the evidence supports it. And we got to stop with the misinformation and the fear because, you know, people in our, in our community are suffering and they've been suffering for too long. So it's, it's time to do the right thing and make this SCS happen and I will stand by that decision.
Thank you for your comments.
I might just jump in there as well.
Of course councillor.
I think that there's no doubt that the community in the area is, is, is concerned. I don't blame them for that. And any change is always worrisome. And if, and, and of course, an SCS brings with it, you know, things that people are concerned about. But the problem is, is in that area. I remember one Sunday afternoon going there, meeting with a couple of people before the council approved it and we were walking around in that area and we, we met somebody that was very, very high on something. And so, you know, let's, the other part of it is, is that we're, we're experiencing double the deaths this year that we experienced last year from a tainted drug supply. And, you know, we can't let that go on. That is just not something that as a city, we can stand by and tolerate. And I think that it really does depend on a good management when the SCS goes in. And I think that that really has to be top mind from the people that are running it. And I think, I think they've, they've heard, they've heard that. And, and I think that we will see a really well-managed operation there and, and then we can, we can keep on evaluating it as well to make sure that it runs well.
Thank you kindly for the additional comments. And so I just wanted to address some roadwork issues next. If we move along, there's some questions with regards to Nelson Road repair, if any repairs are coming, as well as the Blake Roadwork. When would it be done? Because it seems to be moving quite slowly.
You're right. The roadwork always takes longer than you'd like it to work. Let me talk about Blake Street for a minute. They're doing a water main replacement there. And of course, you have to build the water main and then you have to put the services connections across to each house and each building there as well. So it is a messy job and the contractor has really done a pretty good job in terms of the site, but it is, it's a struggle. There's no question about that. He's also had a few issues and I know that our engineers are meeting with, met with him today actually to try to figure out exactly when this job is going to be finished. Hoping to wrap it up and clean it up well before winter, but that's, that's still a work in progress. And I appreciate everybody's patience because it's, it's, it definitely needs, that work needs to be done and it's a, and it's a tough job and there's a lot of traffic and a lot of pedestrians in that area. So please be careful. Nelson is a perennial problem. That short piece from Grove South is, is a problem and I have been talking to our engineers to see what we can do about that. So yeah, leave that with me because it is something that's, it's getting worse every year for sure.
So much. We have another pre-submitted question. It's with regards to issues around Jonathan Court. It seems that some of the area residents are having some issues with some of the behavior of Barry North students specifically, but perhaps not limited to. Issues are including littering, loitering, some aggressive behaviors. And just wondering if there's any way to further support the residents when dealing with these, these interactions.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thanks for the question and yeah, definitely well aware of the issue. And I'm glad to see trustee David O'Brien, who is the trustee for, for the area on the call as well, so he can be aware of the issues. I have spoken with the Um, I have spoken with uh, the, the principal uh, of Berry North. Um, I've also spoken with um, Constable Kira Brooks with the Berry Police, who's our Community Safety and Wellbeing Officer. Uh, and she met with some of the neighbors uh, on Jonathan Court just recently. And has been sending patrols uh, to Jonathan Court uh, as regularly as she can. Obviously, that's not a sustainable solution in the long term. It can't continue forever. But uh, hopefully that will act as a deterrent in the short term. And there are a couple of ideas that we're exploring uh, to address some of the issues. So um, you know, we hear a lot about garbage being thrown all over the place. Uh, so we're looking at getting a, a bin out there to uh, to address that. Um, um, also the pathway, the catwalk uh, to the court. Um, there's some discussion around um, that being closed. And I wanted to hear from uh, the, the residents on Jonathan Court about um, if they support that or not. I didn't want to, uh, you know, see if we could close the catwalk and then um, you know, uh, have some backlash from, from the court if that wasn't what the court actually wanted. But uh, Kira Brooks was able to talk to the neighbors and uh, find out that, that is something that they would like to see, the majority of the neighbors. So um, that's something that uh, we will look at as well. Um, I think uh, speaking to the principal, um, he believes that a lot of this has to do with just the crazy year we've been having. And um, there's a lot of pent up energy. Um, and uh, and so things are a little uh, wild at times. And I'm hoping that that can calm down a bit. We know that one of the best deterrents for this type of nuisance and mischief behavior is cold weather. So we will definitely see an improvement uh, over the winter. And uh, I'm hopeful that we can have some of those other solutions ready to go in the spring so that it doesn't become an issue again. Uh, when the warmer weather comes back in the spring. So um, I want to thank all the residents from Jonathan Court for being so diligent uh, on that issue. And uh, and also Kira Brooks with the Berry Police and uh, the Principal of Berry North for, for their work on that. Um, because it is a team effort. It's a tough situation because um, often the students aren't actually breaking the law. Um, they're just kind of hanging out, maybe where they shouldn't be. They might be kind of rude, but they, it, it's a, it's a fine line. So, and it's not on uh, school property. So uh, it is a difficult thing to deal with. But uh, I'm hopeful that we can come with, up with some solutions that uh, at least mitigate some of those concerns.
Thanks so much. We have a raised hand from Marvia. I'm going to add you to the conversation. If you can unmute yourself, Marvia.
Well, first of all, I'd like to um, clarify, it's uh, not Marvia's.
Oh, my apologies. I'm.
Yeah, it's okay. Um, I wanted to uh, raise a question that I have raised before. And that is about real estate agents being committed to the members of the Committee of Adjustment. Um, I propose that this creates a conflict of interest situation because no real estate agent is going to be happy about opposing the developers. That action has the potential to affect their future income in a negative way. Myself and several neighbors sent emails, letters and phone calls outlining this and other concerns about adjustments in the area um, in Ward One. And um, to counsel, all council members, the City Clerk and the Integrity Commissioner. I did speak um, with uh, Councillor Reitma and Councillor Allen about this. But uh, we received no other replies um, about this. And I, I, I was particularly surprised that the Integrity Commissioner didn't respond. Because um, I really believe this is a conflict of interest. So my question is, is this issue being investigated? And why did I not get, not get responses in writing?
Uh, I, I can speak to that a bit, Kate, because I know we did talk about uh, that. Um, so I, I'm not sure why the Integrity Commissioner didn't respond. And I would encourage you to try again, uh, because normally she's pretty, pretty good at responding. Um, and try by phone as well. Um, also, I would encourage you, if you have a specific um, member of the committee and a specific uh, concern about that member's conduct. Um, I would encourage you to actually look at the complaints process that's laid out in the Code of Conduct and submit a formal complaint. That's the only way it would be investigated. Uh, it doesn't get investigated unless there's, there's actually a complaint submitted. So um, if, if you have that concern, absolutely, you're well within your right to follow that process. Um, I think we need to be clear though, that uh, like the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act is very specific about what a conflict is. Uh, and that a conflict is when you have a pecuniary interest, when you have a financial interest. And it also defines, uh, you know, how direct that is. Um, but our Integrity Commissioner is sort of the referee uh, on that piece. So um, hopefully uh, you can try again and uh, and, and get in touch with her. Uh, and uh, if not, then submitting that formal complaint form will absolutely get her attention. So I'd encourage you to do that.
Okay, just to be clear, um, I did actually send several emails and written copies uh, about this. So I, it, it has been brought to everyone's attention many times. So.
So that's, that's really unusual, Kate, that uh, the Integrity Commissioner wouldn't respond. So we will draw your correspondence to her attention. Uh, Councillor Owen's absolutely right. All members of city boards, commissions uh, or associations, any of the boards, library, plea- uh, not please, sorry, it's the only exception. Um, uh, Library, Committee of Adjustment, Heritage, any of our committees, all of the members are bound by the city's Code of Conduct. And that means the Integrity Commissioner uh, enforces and rules on whether or not they are in conflict or not, or otherwise violating the code.
Okay.
Yeah.
So um, at this point, my only recourse in order to continue this is to
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear you there.
My only recourse at this point is to fill out a formal complaint. Is that correct?
No, uh, uh, she should correspond with you and give you your options in terms of how you can proceed with it. So we'll make sure that she's in touch with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
So we do have another, another raised hands from the audience. So we will add Phil to the conversation. If you can unmute yourself, Phil, and go ahead with your question.
Go ahead, yeah.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Phil Marnelli speaking. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I am a resident of the Ward One Residents Association, or a member, that is, of the Ward One Residents Association. And I'm here with my neighbor Clint Tyler. And we have a question concerning the seventy-five meter uh, rule with respect to uh, uh, boarding houses. Uh, go ahead, Clint.
Yes, since it was a decision made not to uh, go with the uh, idea of licensing uh, rental properties in Ward One as a pilot project, it's now stated, or at least it was implied that there's a potential that there could be a number of enforcement officers hired if there's enough money in the budget. And it would be for the whole city. And it might be as many as four or five people. Now, i- if that is the case, and if it does occur and everything falls into place, will the city now start considering uh, enforcing the seventy-five meter ru- rule for boarding houses? That there should be a separation between them? Because we have a situation where there are three or four in a block. Yeah, with six, eight, ten people in it. And when I ask anyone about that with the city, they just look at me and, and literally tune out. Or say it's, well, it's just the way it is. And I'm, and I'm asking, is, is there a plan to actually enforce this? Because these neighborhoods, because of the economics right now, people can afford to buy these houses for extravagant amounts, put eight to ten people in them at six hundred, six hundred dollars a person each a month and make money. And we are now, in our area, in this block, we have five boarding houses on one block. And there's no enforcement. And if we call the city, they, they don't enforce it. They may send someone out and say, pick up your garbage. But what about stopping people from being, following, not, not following this, this bylaw? Because it's so important. Because once you have a, a, a block with more than half boarding houses, it's very hard to get families to move in. And we are getting close to that point. And then, and, and again, the shock that we felt, our, our four hundred members, by not getting the light, the uh, pilot project is overwhelming. But now to hear that everything is going to be up to whether or not people can justify uh, an increase in the budget, because before it was going to be paid for by people who are in businesses. These are people who own businesses, they're, they're going to pay these uh, rep uh, licenses. Uh, so right now, it sounds like we're at a point where where, where it's almost a gamble now, whether or not in the budget, we may or may not get some enforcement people. And if we do, they may or may not enforce things. So is there a chance to get it, some clear statement that there will be an enforcement to keep these neighborhoods alive?
Yeah, let me be super clear about that, Clint.
And I'm really, I mean, I, I hope I don't sound too, too.
No, I, I don't blame you. I, I know what, I, I know what the neighborhood's been through and eleven years of being mayor, it has, it has not uh, stopped. And I, I hear it in, in every Ward One Town Hall for years. We have not been able to, to uh, address this problem fully. It got better for a while, it's gotten worse. Um, to be very clear, if we hire more enforcement officers and direct them to conduct proactive enforcement, that's exactly what will happen. So that's their job and that's council direction. The other thing that you should be aware of, when we talk about um, uh, enforcement of municipal bylaws, municipal law enforcement, there's no, there's no uh, do it or don't do it. It um, there, it's, it's a law. And it has to be uh, enforced according to um, uh, infor- enforced according to the law. Um, so that uh, the court, you know, the, the charges can stand up in court or the tickets can stand up in court. So uh, I guess my, my reason in saying that to you is, if council makes a decision in two weeks, uh, and like I said, I think there's a number of us that are going to be advocating for it to invest more in enforcement and move to proactive enforcement of property standards in the college neighborhood, parking standards in the college neighborhood. Uh, then absolutely, uh, that will happen because that's what people's, that's what people's jobs are.
Mister, Mister Mayor, or your worship, I really, and as our group, really appreciates what you and Claire and uh, councils have done considering this issue so much in the last few months. You really have. Don't agree with the outcome, but we appreciate what you're doing and it's a movement in the right direction. How do we, as really one of the wards, and also, one of the things I want to mention, we have been approached now by two other wards who are seriously going to form our Neighborhood Associate, Residents Association. And, and we're there to help them, okay? And if anyone's listening, we want to be there to help. Because uh, we've got uh, wards, ward, other, Ward Two, Ward Four, and, and, and others, they're approaching us saying help. And we're going to help them. Because I mean, again, voices have to be heard. How do we help the council hear us in the three weeks so that they get a message that, look, there's hundreds and hundreds of us that are desperately needing uh, the support for enforcement? How do we do that? How do we get to council? I don't know. I'm not a politician, I'm a social worker.
Great question. Write to us uh, by email in your own words. Um, there are issues where forum emails come in, people all send the same words. It, it, you know, when you've received the same words uh, twenty times.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, it's one thing. When you write and say, I'm a resident, I've been here for fifteen years, you've been promising to fix this, now you've got a chance to, council, please do it. Uh, and uh, you know, you can write to uh, uh, council at berry.ca, you can write to us individually by email. Uh, and, and I, it's effective. That's the most effective.
May I ask one more quick question, Mister Mayor?
Sure, uh, we are.
Real quick, real quick. How, how, how do we, how do we tell our people that are afraid to send things to city council? Because they're going to be, uh, people are going to uh, attack them. Right? Because they're afraid. I have people, I'm going door to door, who are afraid to contact city council because they're afraid of repercussions. Because they're complaining to the city. How do we assure them that their, their information is held in confidence?
Absolutely is. But what, what kind of, are you worried about a landlord finding out who complained?
And yes, yes, also, and also, also seniors that are, I, I talk to, because I happen to be almost eighty years old. So they talk to me when I go door to door and they're afraid of saying, look, if I call the city, I'm going to get in trouble. That people in the neighborhood will know it. What do I do? And I said, what?
I think uh, Clint, one of the things that you can, we can do is, you can, you can have them call me or email.
Okay.
And then I, I could put it to uh, to the enforcement branch and, and uh, then their name never shows up.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you. I'll do that. I appreciate your time. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Clint. So uh, we are a bit over time. I've, I've got a little bit more time. I do want to try and answer a few more questions at least. Just a reminder that uh, the questions that we haven't been able to answer, uh, Lauren dot wild at berry.ca, if you can send them to her. Uh, we will try and uh, answer all questions after the meeting in terms of follow-ups by email. But uh, Lauren, maybe we get time for uh, two or three more questions?
Of course. Do you want to do a little bit of speed round?
Yeah, let's do, let's do the speed round thing. We often do this at, near the end. Let's see how many.
Okay, are you ready?
Go ahead.
We've got enforcement on cutting back North Shore Trail. Um, what's going on with enforcement of those who are cutting back the overgrowth that are not legally allowed to? And will the lake house be prohibited from cutting the overgrowth as they wouldn't be grandfathered?
Okay, um, very quickly on that, um, we are, we have a consultant uh, on board now. There's going to be a public meeting in January or February. And he's writing a report on how we can better uh, do vegetation management all the way along the trail. Um, you've hit on a real problem. Uh, when the city doesn't do it well, then uh, some neighbors take it in, into their own hands and uh, do it. And then that doesn't work out well either. Um, so we need an overall plan that makes things work. And um, that's what we're discussing at the moment. Um, and we will have a public meeting in that early in the new year to solve, to try to solve that.
Amazing. Um, as we quickly approach the snow season, has the city uh, considered having the arms on the snowplow to help stop the pileups?
Yes. Okay, so I, that video gets sent to me every year of the plow in Alaska that drops its, its uh, the door and stops the snow going into driveways. Um, there, there's a really direct answer on that. Um, if, to use that system, um, the plows have to travel at a much, much, much slower rate of speed, which means uh, they would not be able to do the city with anywhere near the fleet we've got. The increased cost is, is enormous. Uh, it's six million dollars right now for winter control in an average winter. Uh, in a bad heavy winter, it's more, in a late winter, it's less. Um, when they looked at, at uh, actually having that kind of a system, even if we could manage where the snow goes, where the driveways are far enough apart, you can do that in a neighborhood where driveways are a long way apart, where they're close together, there's no room to store the snow. That's the other problem. So unfortunately, it would cause a huge de- decrease in the number of calls to my office and to every city councillor uh, during the winter. But that system isn't really feasible in a city uh, like ours, unfortunately, both for cost and for some practical reasons.
Thanks so much. Um, any updates on the YMCA?
Yes, they're coming to council on December thirteenth to give uh, us and the community an update on their plans. Uh, they are working through the details of going on to the H Block, which is what we call the big parking lot, right beside the downtown public library. Uh, just to give you a sense, their building is a little bit bigger than the downtown branch, uh, not a lot. Uh, but uh, the, the proposal would see them go there. We will get an update on December thirteenth, so tune in.
Perfect. Um, so a quick question about the secondary units and accessory buildings. They're building, being close, building, built, excuse me, close to lot lines, according to the residents. Um, what's being done to control these sort of accessory buildings that are permitted?
Yeah, we just passed some new restrictions and I'll give it to Claire to go through it. But council just uh, uh, increased the setbacks. And it was Councillor Reitma who actually moved a motion to increase the setback so that we don't get these monster carriage homes, which are basically a second home right on the back, backyards. Uh, but go ahead, Claire.
Yeah, that's uh, you're right on. Uh, the setbacks used to be, you know, quite small uh, in the rear and on the sides. And um, we just passed the zoning bylaw to make those bigger so that um, there are uh, uh, three meters on either side and seven meters in the rear. And uh, basements are no longer permitted. So uh, this, hopefully the disruption will be a lot less. And uh, there will be bigger setbacks um, to the existing houses.
Thanks much. Um, is there any potential to redevelop um, the Sears Building at the Bayfield Mall into affordable housing? Or perhaps the vacant offices at one eleven Worsley be turned into affordable housing opportunities?
Keenan and I are smiling because the Affordable Housing Task Course, which is going to report in the uh, first week of January, uh, sneak peek, probably one of our biggest or most bold, I suppose, recommendations will be to start allowing housing as a right on a lot of general commercial sites. I think that's the next frontier. You can build apartment buildings in front of old shopping malls or old big box retail. Uh, you know, up against the street where there's transit, where there's shopping, where there's schools nearby. There's no neighbors that are affected uh, in terms of single detachment. There's no neighbors that are affected in terms of single detached homes that suddenly have an apartment building on top of them because you're out out on a commercial strip. And the the Georgian Mall site at the north end, that's possible. When it comes to converting a department store, it doesn't really work. I mean, you have to to create residential units, you need, you know, plumbing for a hundred apartments and that sort of thing. And once you get into that, there's really nothing in a department store shell that's worth saving to convert. One eleven Worsley, it's very expensive to convert an office building to to residential. They did look at doing that, but I believe are continuing to try and lease it. And I do believe have been successful. So they've signed some leases for the complex, both the retail and some of the floors of the office building. So watch for more there over the coming months.
Council, did you want to add to that? Just just wanting to check in with you. Will you come?
No, I'm really excited about that.
I just wanted to make sure. You look very excited, so I just wanted to double check. A quick question on winter parking restrictions. Would council consider amending the bylaws to permit parking on odd number, even number sides of the street? Sort of thing, or a month by month to permit on-street parking in winter control areas?
You got to plow the whole street. It's just not really feasible, unfortunately, to have over. And I mean, the cooperation we get from everyone is really wonderful. I think one of the challenges that we are going to face as a community going forward is as intensification occurs in neighborhoods, inevitably, there is some increase in demand for on-street parking. And in the winter, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge. So we have to, we have to balance what I think is over provision of parking in certain areas of the city, like commercial strips, with the fact that, you know, you get issues like that where the people have to be able to get the cars off the street in the winter for us to properly maintain them.
Awesome. Just a quick comment, lighting in walkways and parks. One specific park, Raidenhurst Park, has no lights. The residents see that it would be dangerous, so just a comment, seeing if you could think about adding lighting to the parks at night. Another question we have here, just to try and keep on topic and on on time. Is it possible for seniors to get parking passes for all of the lots downtown and along the waterfront? Would that be considered by council?
Like free parking for seniors?
Yes, I believe that would be the to get parking passes.
It's never been asked for before, you know, I've been on council for fifteen years now. I I think I'd have to think about that. I mean, we did free transit for seniors one day of the week, and we've considered expanding that a little bit more. But I must admit, I'm not sure what the case would be. We we've offered veterans and and we've tried to create some some parking for disabled permits close to where you need to go. But in terms of why there should be free parking, I, you know, I'd be interested in hearing the case for that. Let me put it that way. It's never been put to me.
Certainly. Is there any update on the development that's happening on Duckworth, apparently from Mountbatten to Napier?
Yes, in fact, it was in the paper today that the application was deemed complete by the city. And so it'll move forward in the process as time goes along. The application, and I don't have it in front of me here, but I think it was twenty eight units back to back townhouses. So stay tuned, I guess, is the answer on that one.
Amazing. I'm going to try to go quick because we've got a minute left. Is there any updates on the downtown theater?
Task force is coming to council. So we have three task forces, one on affordable housing, one on Performing Arts Center, and the third one on western revitalization, and Claire's on the performing arts one. So Claire?
Yes, there's a task force that is hard at work. We are actually meeting tomorrow night again. And we've got what we think the the community needs for a theater, what what needs to be inside of it. And that report is is going to go forward early in the new year to council. So, yeah, again, stay tuned. I think it's a, it's a, it's a great, great news story.
That's amazing. So we'll end the questions with one final question. Loud vehicles, loud vehicles, modified vehicles, speeding vehicles, as well as motorcycles. What's being done to help mitigate these noise issues that they're experiencing throughout both wards?
It is not a true town hall meeting without a question.
If somebody asks, doesn't ask us, yeah, modified mufflers. It's be it it became a real problem during during COVID, and I don't know why. There's just that many more modified vehicles on our streets. The police have conducted two blitzes. One was an Ontario wide one, the second one was local. They've been very public about it. They put the pictures on social media and and have tried to get the word out so that the sort of enthusiast groups who feel they can install these illegal aftermarket mods are, get the get the word that they're very expensive tickets. Unfortunately, it's it is not the highest priority, of course. You know, we have a police service who prime, you know, primary problem or primary issue rightly is addressing violent crime, addressing property crime. Noisy vehicles is not always at the top of their list, but they've heard the community, I can tell you that. And they have heard the complaints, and they are continuing to try and conduct enforcement. Council's been twisting ourselves in knots, trying to find a way to either through bylaw or changes to our bylaws that the police could enforce noise meter, something that that might help. Not a lot of communities have had success with this, but it is one of the reasons why we ask the Berry Police to to do more through their traffic unit.
And I'm watching closely in Toronto, there will be a report coming sometime in the first quarter of twenty twenty two, I believe, about decibel meters at certain points throughout the city that sort of like photo radar that address noisy vehicles in that way. And as well, I think when you think about other creative solutions, like lowering speed limits does reduce noise. Transitioning more quickly to electric vehicles, electric vehicles are way quieter. So and it's also a win-win for for the environment as well. So we need to think creatively because there's no easy solution here. Transit as well, we're transitioning our transit fleet to electric. That's going to be much quieter. They're probably one of the biggest culprits of noisy vehicles. And then I don't know how we get people to realize that it's not cool and it's not impressive to have your loud car go down Dunlop Street disturbing everyone on a patio, trying to enjoy themselves. So there's kind of a bit of a cultural issue there, too, where we need to change people's mindsets around that.
So thank you, everybody, for your questions and and all of the different topics. This always happens with our town halls, we end up covering a very wide range of of issues. But that's what keeps being in local government, being your mayor, being your council, a wonderful job. It is never boring, often challenging, because there are issues that we aren't able to or successful in addressing. But there are many that we are, and I hope you will bear with us and continue to work with us as we try and improve our own services and and respond to the kind of complaints you brought up tonight. But also, hopefully, you will see our progress as a community. We, there's no question, we are coming out of COVID very strong economically. I hope that we will start to see that in terms of the the impact of the changing development in our community. And and some of the benefits of that, I firmly believe busier streets are safer streets, more people walking around. We've learned to walk a lot more, remembered to walk a lot more during COVID. We've now built a Dunlop Street that is much more pedestrian focused. We have open air Dunlop, and I think that's the thin end of the wedge. I think we can create great places for people to be in across our city. And and as more people start to live in some of our neighborhoods, that creates more customers for businesses, it creates more eyes on the street, and ultimately, I hope it brings you more good neighbors. I know there are challenges in certain neighborhoods around the college with social issues and in areas of our downtown. But I think regardless of what our opinions are, your opinions, my opinions are on how to solve them. We are all committed to trying to solve them and create a stronger community for it. So thank you, everyone, for being here. I know we're well over time, but thanks for sticking with us. Please email if you did not get your question answered and you do want something followed up from tonight. And could we all thank Lauren Wild with one of those quiet Zoom claps for for organizing tonight and continuing to respond to complaints? So thank you all.
Thank you for being here, everyone. Take care and stay safe.